Legal notice, and then we'll have anybody here for the application. And then we'll listen to anybody opposed to the application. And then we'll end the public discussion and go into our voting discussion.
Okay.
Would you please read legal notice?
Okay. Legal notice, Town of-
One more thing before we start.
Go.
I also want to say that if you disagree with any decision by this board, you can take it to Superior Court within 15 days. Thank you. Fifteen.
Legal notice, Town of Rocky Hill Zoning Board of Appeals. The Rocky Hill Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 15, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Council Chamber, second floor of the Rocky Hill Town Hall, 761 Old Main Street, Rocky Hill, Connecticut, 06067, to consider the following. A, Appeal 2021-02 Theresa Kazut, requesting a variance from requirements of the Rocky Hill zoning regulations, Section E, I'm sorry, excuse me, Section 3 dot E. Height and area requirements to allow for a side yard setback of 14 feet 4 inches, where 15 feet is required to allow for the construction of a 20-foot 9-inch by 20-foot 9-inch addition for property located at 72 Willow Road in the R20 Residential District ID number 18-004. At this hearing, all interested persons may be heard and written communications will be received. Texts and/or maps of these applications are on file in the planning office, Town Hall, 761 Old Main Street, Rocky Hill, Connecticut. Rocky Hill Town Hall is accessible to all with ADA-compliant facilities, dated for publication on this 9th and 11th day of June 2021. Zoning Board of Appeals, Tom Paglisi, Chairman, Michelle Zach, Secretary.
Thank you, Michelle. And who would speak for the application? Would it be you, Teresa? Would you please come to the microphone? Restate your full name and-
Teresa Kazut.
Please tell us.
Excuse me?
Please tell us about the application and why you apply.
So, application, I live on 72 Willow Road and on 74, which is the duplex, you know, lives my daughter and my son-in-law. And lately, like few months ago, the family get a little bit larger on the other side, because on my side, I am just me. So, you know, two bedrooms and one little bathroom is just too small for four people. So, we decide, you know, I decide that I would like to do some addition to, you know, for them, which will be 20 feet by 20 feet, two stores, you know, up and down. And so, the plan which I have in mind is, you know, to have like a little of entry to the side. This is why I really need this four feet coming from the wall toward the neighbor, you know, which, which I am short like, what, six tenths of the, of the eight inches or six tenths, because I think it's 14.4 and requirement is 15. So, this is why we are over here for this few inches if we can do it, you know, because as I said, it's very important, because the walkway, entry, if it's this few inches, you know, narrower, it will be just difficult to have like hanger there, put shoes there and things. This is why we are over here to ask if we can build in 14.4.
Thank you. I have one question. Now, you can't build in back because I understand there's a sewage question there on the property.
Is the-
Why can't you build just straight back?
No, I, we, no, not in the sewage. We are to the neighbor border, where is the, I have just recently the survey man, you know, doing the survey, and I was sure that, you know, we're gonna have 15 feet from the, from the border of the neighbor. But just with this exact man, map is showing that it's 14.4 from the neighbor. So, this is, we are short over here from the neighbor border.
I think what-
I understand.
Commissioner's referring to is there's a reference to-
You probably have over there the-
Sanitary sewer easement through the back that you, so you can't, there is an easement that runs through your backyard, so you can't build in the back anyway? That's what, that's what it says on the application.
What?
This, excuse me, this, the sewer easement here is what he's referring to, that you can't go back further because, because of this easement that goes off to the south?
But we don't want to go there.
Well, that was, that was one of the reasons though, that you couldn't go back when we discussed it originally.
But we, we want to go to the side, not to back.
Right, right. Right. But one of the, but you could go to the back if that easement wasn't there?
Yes.
Yeah, so, we're trying to clarify is that you would have to demonstrate a hardship, and if you, if you could build it somewhere else without having to extend into somebody else's property, then there wouldn't be a hardship, but you can't go back. Just go along with me.
No, because that would be, you know, awkward, you know, just if you want to go from the street to the house, would be just very awkward to just build to the back, you know, and go around, that would be, no. This is why really we would like to have this entry to the house, you know, on the side.
Right, but you, but just for the record, you can't go back anyway because there's an easement there. So, I just want to make sure we're all clear on the record on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's clear.
I got one question. You, you can't move this addition six inches over?
I would like, this is why we'd like to, this is why I would like to have this 16-inch over to, I don't know, do you have the plan over there from survey?
I mean, the sewer easement has nothing to do with moving the addition six inches over to the right, and then you wouldn't need, you wouldn't need a variance?
The problem was just about the, the problem was about the variance for this eight inches whatever from the neighbor.
I understand that, but if you moved the addition six inches over to the right, you wouldn't need a variance? No, the, the-
I don't understand.
No, sewer easement has nothing to do with what you want to do.
No.
And it has, and the dimensions of the, of the addition isn't going to change, but if you were to move it six inches to the right, you wouldn't need a variance?
Okay.
No.
I don't know why you wouldn't-
The entrance way where you have, where you have four feet for the entrance, the new entrance way, if that was less than four feet by, by six tenths or, yeah, six tenths.
Okay, can I show you, I don't know if you have this map over here?
We have that.
If you were bringing it right to the edge of the house.
Because?
Because you're, but, but you're, you're jetting it out away from the house. You're going beyond the existing house.
I want to go away from the house exactly four feet. So, this four feet by five feet, which I gonna have it, gonna give me like room to the entry of the, of the house.
Right, but what Commissioner, what the Commissioner is saying though, if you didn't do that and you just went from the edge of the house, you wouldn't need a variance, because you're still within your back.
I understand, but then, but then, excuse me.
Right, right.
But then-
But because it goes out, it has this, how does that involve the sewage?
It does that, it does that.
But, excuse me, can I say something? I wouldn't like to do this, you know what reason? Because if I go straight to the, you know, to where I can go straight, like you said, to the, where is the building, then I would have to have door on the side and just go straight to the living room, let's say, you know? You need to have some little space, you know, for like madroom, like the, you know, like the little entry, you know?
So, for the-
Because I don't like idea to go straight, you know, and from outside you open the door and wind everything comes.
So, what-
So, this is why I would like to have this.
So, let's, let's, I understand that. So, I think going back to the Commissioner's question about the entryway, and maybe this is a building code issue, I don't know, instead of having a four-foot wide entryway, if you have whatever, six tenths-
3.4 wide. I don't know the width of a door.
I don't know if there's a code issue about the width of the door. That would be the question, but to me, if you could just keep it a few inches less, a few inches less, you could do it.
No, few inches less, you know, you have to have wall probably around six inches, you know? You have the other, the door, and it's so narrow there, you know? So, you just walk in and what, just walk in, but you would like to have some hanger there, something to put shoes on. So, this few inches really makes difference, because at least gives the width of the wall, you know, so.
Do you have anything that renders what you're going to be putting up?
Excuse me?
A picture of what you may be doing of the addition? Do you have any?
Reducing.
You have nothing as far as what it's going to look like?
We have plans.
You have them?
We have, we have the plans, but I still have to work on the plans, you know, with the, with this little additions. I have already plans, but still didn't, you know, apply for that, but I know what is in my mind. If you would like to see it, that's what I, that's what I have over here.
You know, the thing is, you got your, this is two stories we're talking about.
Yeah, two stories. So, as I said, this is, this is not the same, because that will be on the foundation, totally different, but something to just show you what this is about, you know?
That's fine.
Angle the door light, there would still be the light. I don't understand that.
Excuse me, could, is, have you, have you, do you have a builder that's been working with you on this?
Yes.
Have, have they talked to you about anything required under the building code or anything like that, as far as the widths of the doorways or openings or?
Yes, we are already working on, and yes, yes, and this is what he said that-
He says six inches, if it's, if it's less than where it is now, that he'll have a, he'll have a code?
This few inches really, you know, would make difference, you know? Because this is, if I have four feet, it's not really four feet inside, you know? Because four feet is already with the wall, you know?
Right.
You're there. So, you have to have the doors, which is like 36 inches, you know, and this, so it's like-
So, the doors have to be 36 inch, wait a minute, so I think I'm getting there, so.
It has to be framed in, but I think what she's trying to say, and the framing to frame in the door would-
Yeah, the frame and everything, so you have to, it's missing this few inches, you know?
So, it's not so much a convenience thing. The problem is for your builder, if he's got a, if he has to build the door to 36 inches and you're losing four inches in that four-foot area, I think you're going to have a problem fitting it in.
It's, you know what, as I said, this is about, really about the space which you're gonna have later when it's finished, you know, inside the space. Because that's gonna be not 48 inches, will be 42 inches probably inside, even less, around 40 inches, because the other side of the wall have to be finished.
Got regulations on where the door should be on answering point?
I don't, no, I don't do anything with the building department, so I don't know the answer to that.
Thought it might have been.
Yeah, this reflects what you were talking about.
So, as I said, these plans are, that was just prototype. They, I, we are working on this, you know, more, but the, but the size, this is what it is, 20.9 and the other one, and as I said, this is very important, this few inches toward the neighbor.
Mr. Chairman, are there other concerns?
I suppose you can't, you can't make that addition four, six inches or four inches smaller?
As I said, probably could, but you know what, we are losing on the space which you're gonna use it this all the time later, you know? Because what is, what is 40 inches, you know, very narrow to walk to the, you know, to the house, and as I said, to-
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about the four inches at the entrance. I'm talking about the four inches overall. Instead of being, what, 16.9, could you be 16.5?
But, but this makes difference, because this, this addition will be not going straight to the walls which are now, will be, you know, coming out.
The four feet off the existing house.
Huh?
The four feet is off the existing house that's there now.
It's coming out from existing house, and this is why the four feet is really, which is really needed there.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Phil, do you have any more?
An easier one becomes a problem. It was easy at first, but then it-
Yes.
For me.
I think most people are trying to find a way that we can accommodate with, without having to extend over the 15 foot. Do you have any more questions?
I guess, well, I don't know if it's now, I don't know if it's the right time for it, maybe it's during, I guess the question would be if, because it seems like technically we're not exactly sure what her builder is suggesting here as far as how this has to be built in order to comply with code or, you know, building requirements, building standards, anything like that. I guess I'm struggling right now with the idea of a hardship, because it just can't be something being done for convenience reasons, because it's a nice thing to have. It has to be something beyond that. If they're doing this because the builder is saying there's no other place, you just can't put this doorway in any other way and comply with code.
Pardon me.
I guess I would-
My granddaughter's diabetic, and she's flipping out over here. It's okay.
So, I mean, I, that's, we could talk about that, but I, that's my, that's my struggle, so.
That's my struggle too, is the hardship.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to note for the record that the public hearing sign was placed on the property. I did receive the certificates of mailing, and also in your packets was a letter from the neighbor to the south at number 76 Willow Road.
Thank you. Do you have any other things that you want to share with us about this?
No, that's it, the only thing. I would love if you allowed us to do this way.
Okay. Do you also want to speak for this?
Well, you know-
You'd have to go up to the microphone, please.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have any technical additions to add. Am I to understand that?
Just, excuse me, please, would you go to the microphone?
We just have to get you on the record for who you are.
Yeah, and just state your name.
State your name.
Yeah. So, my name is Richard Lettigar. I live at 74 Willow Road. Um, yeah, so, we, you know, obviously, we're, we're trying to expand here, and I didn't know that, that the eight inches would be, would be presenting such a problem. So, we need the entrance there on the side, obviously, to have, I mean, to have a foyer so that just, she was, she was correct, so that doesn't go straight into the home. So, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand then if, if we moved the plans six or eight inch, because you're talking about eight inches, that is the difference, so we would have to-
I don't think it's eight inches.
Right. So, so if you're saying we moved it somehow further inward, that wouldn't be the problem? It wouldn't be a problem anymore? We wouldn't have to, because you're, it seems to be like you're, the hardship is, is the stickler in the issue here.
Correct.
That, that we're not actually in a hardship situation? Is that what you're trying to get at?
Correct. So, in order to be, to obtain a variance, you have to demonstrate that there's a, there's a hardship, there's a reason that you're doing this beyond the fact that this is just something that you want to do for convenience or because you like it this way. It has to be based upon something that's demonstrated that there's really no other way that can be do, there's no other way you could do it. So, you know, I, what I, what I'm seeing as the potential issue here is if you want to do this and, and the four or six inches or something that your builder is saying, I can't build this foyer for you in the way you want to build it, because I'm going to be running into building code issues, that might be a potential hardship. I, I don't know, but-
Would it be better if we had the builders speak or?
It may be helpful to hear from somebody who's building it to tell us how, how-
The technical aspects of it.
That's technically why it has to be this way, because I, I think what we're all struggling with is, and frankly, for, for your purposes, is if, if you, if you don't need the six inches, then you don't need to come in here and get a variance or demonstrate a hardship, and you can go ahead and build it without a problem. If your builder's saying there's just no way I can do it, I need to understand why that is.
Right.
Okay.
I just want to, I just want clarification. This is a duplex, right? It's a side-by-side duplex? So, are you saying that where the end of this addition is, is basically this, the, the layout of that side of the house?
They want eight inches, not six.
Six, six tenths of a foot, I guess, is eight inches.
Just under, yeah, just under.
I don't even like to six tenths.
So, on this, this particular plan view, according to your hardship, you can't go back any further because of the sewage. Now, where does that show it on here?
I think there's a sewer easement that's reflected on the-
The dash, the dash lines behind the house.
Right here, the sewer easement's right there. Has nothing to- Nothing on her problem? No, no.
The problem is over here. Do you see this problem here?
No, I understand that, I'm just saying, according to your hardship, you can't go back any further because of the sewer easement, and that's not true.
Builder in, yeah.
But that's all, I'm just questioning your hardship.
What has to do with the sewage then?
So, so, so what you're saying, so what you're saying is if we put the foyer on the back, we can go back as far as we want?
As long as you don't interfere with that sewer easement.
Sanitary sewer easement, the rear of the house prevents the addition from being larger.
Yeah, but the sewer is, the sewer is-
I understand that, but-
... and my property which-
It should not be part of a hardship, because sewer's way over here.
Because it's much farther, and she, I don't know why, who wrote this? Because the problem is just over here. Probably is, you know what, exactly over here, do you see this little thing here? This is what-
Somebody should have coached you.
I, I think, no, I, I think somebody was coached, I think somebody was trying to help her. So, I, I think the, the point was that there's no other place to put this foyer, because if they, if she can't put it in the back because there is an easement, that was just a way of, I think, expressing that this is the only place they could put the doorway.
And we don't know how far there is right now between the proposed addition and the start of that easement?
No, we can't tell that from-
No, we can't tell that from the drawing. There could be 15 feet between the end of the addition and the beginning of the easement, you know?
If, looking at, looking at this, that, that addition and that sewer easement is nowhere near, it, I'll bet you it's 20 feet.
That's what I'm saying, we don't know. It could be 15 feet or whatever.
So.
So, there-
It's about four feet from the easement. It's about four feet.
Could you go to the microphone, please?
Go to the microphone, just so we have a record.
No, I just said that you know the sewage, which is like main hall, I, the back of the property, which just go, which goes sewage just from our house goes there, and then goes to the neighbors, to the street, you know, and the wall, not whatever road. So, it's not that it's anything there, it's just this main hall.
It's not where you intend to build, and it's not close to where you intend to build, is that correct?
What, even here, sorry?
Sewer easement is not where you intend to build?
No, no, it's like 30 feet away from this.
How far is it?
I think like around 30 feet away.
30 feet away, okay.
It's four feet.
It's how?
It's four feet.
It's four feet?
Yeah. So, they, they could, they could go back four feet more for the addition.
Before they hit the easement?
Exactly.
This, yeah, this, that's the easement.
The big box, yeah.
Yeah. They, they, where the proposed building ends, there's another four feet before you get to the easement.
Gotcha, okay, that's why I was questioning, because we didn't know how, how much space there was between that.
It's a practical matter, putting a foyer back there wouldn't make a lot of sense anyway, but I, I think we just want to establish that that's probably not the-
Another item that we had discussed in, in meeting before the application was the configuration of the interior of that unit, which I think she's trying to convey as far as not having a doorway straight into the house. I don't know what room is right there on the side, but that was being discussed.
Yes, this is what we are doing this for, yeah, to have just not walk straight to the house, you know, from outside with the, yeah, this is to have just little like entry room, you know?
I, I think it would be helpful for me to have the person who's planning on building this explain what they're trying to do and what, what constraints they're under to do it, because I don't know if, I can't tell if there's a hardship right now. I don't know if this is just something that just works better for them or this is legitimate hardship.
Right, yeah.
Table with, just table it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, that's what we were talking about too.
All right. Do we need to- Let's, let's close the public section.
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second?
Well, excuse me, do you, do we want to close the-
Depending on what, what you're going to be doing, if you need any more information, you don't want to be closing the public hearing.
Okay, then we won't take a vote. Well, then-
Rescind the motion or modify it? I think you had a second.
I think let's rescind the motion.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Rescind the motion?
Aye.
To rescind.
That's to rescind. So, I- Now, we need a motion to table it to next, to next month.
Okay.
Continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
Without prejudice.
All right.
Make a motion to table the public hearing until next meeting, without prejudice due and looking for more information from the contractor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
That means you gotta meet no matter what.
You got it.
That's why you did that.
No, that's not why I did that.
Unless, unless the contractor looks at it and says there's ways I could do it, that it won't-
Right, no, we haven't approved you nor denied you, we're just going to have to push it off till next month if you could get your contractor in here.
Explain.
Yeah, so, were these being put into, or are these the applicant's drawings?
I made the copies, that's all.
Oh, you made copies? Oh, okay.
Okay.
Might be helpful if the contractor brought a sketch or something or-
Right, or brought, yeah.
Give me a call tomorrow, we can discuss it.
Okay.
Okay, can I have a map which I just-
Oh.
Those, those pictures.
Oh, these right here? Okay, there you go.
I'm sorry, I thought that, I thought you were talking about our other plan.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
So, we're going to see you again next month?
Yep.
And we haven't approved or denied it at this time. We'll continue it next month.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
If we're gonna do it again, this is already stupid questions, but I have to ask. Maybe I should ask for another half foot more, because you know what?
I, I think what you want to do, so I think you need to talk to your contractor-
Yeah.
And just say that we, the, the zoning board of appeal needs an explanation as to why it is a hardship for you to have this over 15-
Can he just send a letter or something, you know, or, I don't know, or how much you're gonna call it, or contract to come and do-
He can present it in any way that you and he work out.
Yeah, whatever way you want to do it, but-
If he gonna just write or something, because you know, in today's world, you know what is happening around, you know, with all this-
If that's-
... everything, they are so busy and they are, you know, so it's just-
Yeah, that's fine, I can work that out with your contractor and we'll, we will work to accommodate whatever you bring in.
Okay, so wait a minute, no, so no, we cannot be here 15th, no, 15th, you know, we're gonna have to come by yourself, because I cannot be 15th, I gonna be away from Connecticut.
Okay.
Well, it would be on the 13th. No.
No, no, no.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it would be on the 20th of June, of July. Phew, my months are up. 20th of July, it's the third Tuesday of the month.
Yes. Okay.
We'll see you then.
Very good, thank you, folks.
Yeah.
And now, do we close publics in order to continue or is it necessary? I don't know technically. technically.
No, no, you're, you're, you're fine. You continued the public hearing so that, that, for that application.
Right.
So, you can go to the next item.
So, we can actually go to old business.
Okay, old business. Is there actually any new or old business? Anything else that we have to rule on, discuss?
Well, I want to, nothing, nothing to, to rule on. What's going on with the, on New Britton Avenue?
Ask her.
Which one on New Britton Avenue?
Not, not, not the contractor, but the house where he's got...
He submitted a, a schedule of removing vehicles.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Dave.
The brick one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, you know exactly the house I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, then approval of the minutes.
Make a motion and approve the minutes of May 19th.
May 18th?
May 18th.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving May 18th minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And any other points of personal privilege? Okay, and motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Michelle seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hit the button.